Maybe. Love the energy. Welcome to tonight, tonight's student recognition ceremony, the first one of 2020. So before each school board meeting, we recognize students who have reached state-level accomplishments. Tonight, we will honor White Bear Lake Area High School Fall Musical Students who received the award of outstanding in the Hennepin Theater Trust Spotlight Program. So what you'll be receiving tonight is a certificate and the coveted bear pin. The only way you can get one of those pins is to be recognized by the school board. So that is what you'll be receiving tonight. And now I'd like to invite Mr. Don Bosch, principal at South Campus, to start tonight's ceremony. Welcome, Mr. Bosch.
Good evening, everybody. White Bear Lake Area High School has a strong tradition of a fall musical performers breaking a leg, and this year's production of Aida was no exception. The following students were recognized with the honor of outstanding in the prestigious statewide Spotlight Program run by the Hennepin Theater Trust. The following group of students received accolades of outstanding for their membership in the Pitt Orchestra. Devin Helms. It's not here.
I will accept this award.
Hayden Staub. Catherine Twist. So next, the following students were honored with outstanding awards for their individual performances. Jackson Ogden for outstanding performance in a supporting role. Jordan Rodriguez, outstanding technical leadership stage manager. Josh Powell, outstanding performance in a leading role. And Ninchai Nuck, outstanding performance in a leading role. The following adults were also a vital part of the student's success. Kristen Shinard, Pitt Orchestra member. Katie Althoff, Pitt Orchestra Director. Corinne Stephens, tech manager. Jeff Willey, technical director, is not here this evening. And last but not least, Wendy Suja, director. Congratulations, everybody. If we can have everybody come back for your picture, that would be great.
If you're able to take that couple rows here and try to find your windows. Could we kind of shift this way? The tape is kind of... There we go. Yeah, there we go. Perfect. There we go. Okay. I'll take a few here, one, two, three. If you could poke your head out. Yeah, there we go. Perfect. Okay. Okay, now move on to White Bear.
So parents, if you'd like to take pictures, if you haven't already, please do so.
Be shy.
So, parents and family members in the audience, please stand to be recognized as well, too. Thank you for all of your support.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Make sure you grab a cookie from the back of the room, please. Anybody here, please grab a cookie. So thank you for coming out tonight. And again, congratulations. Have a good evening. Regular board meeting starts at seven.
Before we get started, we need to deliver the oath of office, so I would ask Scott and Marge and Angela to step up front, and we'll do that real quick.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of this and the state of Minnesota.
And the state of Minnesota.
And that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the Office of School Board Member.
And that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the Office of School Board Member.
Okay. Of Independent School District 624.
Of Independent School District 624.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations.
With that, I will ask for a roll call, a roll call, please.
Arcand.
Here.
Beloit.
Here.
Chapman.
Here.
Ellison, here.
Mullen.
Here.
Newmaster.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Please stand and remove your hats and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have before us an agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Chapman, a second by Ms. Beloit. This will require, we'll just, all in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Agenda is approved. Next is our organization of the school board. Every year, we elect our officers to the school board. So I will start with asking for nominations of chair. Is there any nominations for chair? Mr. Chapman.
I nominate Don Mullen for chair of the school board.
I accept that nomination. Is there any other nominations for chair? Any other nominations for chair? Any other nominations for chair? That being said, with no one else, I am elected chair of the board. I will now move on to vice chair. Ms. Beloit.
I'd like to vote or nominate Kim Chapman for vice chair.
Kim Chapman has been nominated for vice chair. You accept, Kim?
Yes.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Kim has been elected vice chair. I would now open it up for nominations for clerk. Mr. Chapman.
I nominate Jessica Ellison for clerk.
I accept.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Jessica, you've been elected clerk. Would now open it up for treasurer. Mr. Chapman.
And I nominate Deb Beloit for the treasurer of the board.
I accept.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Congratulations. You've been elected treasurer. We will now move into the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
A motion by Dr. Newmaster. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Beloit. Before we call for a vote, I just want to thank every year or every month when we do the consent agenda, this is our sundry items, our minutes, those sort of things. But one thing that I'm very thankful for is the generosity of our community, and this month is no different. There's been a lot of gifts that were given to the students to support the students at our school district, and just want to recognize and tell them thank you very much for all those community members that have done that. With that, this will require a roll call vote.
Arcand.
Aye.
Beloit.
Aye.
Chapman.
Aye.
Ellison, aye.
Mullen.
Aye.
Newmaster.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Okay. Consent agenda passes. Now, we are at the portion of our program, our meeting to, for public forum. We ask that if you want to address the school board, that you fill out a white card. I did not receive any white cards. Is there anybody that would like to address the school board this evening? Seeing none, we will move on to our first, excuse me, one second. Let me move my paper. Our first informational item, C1, which is the overview and welcome to White Bear Week and updates on registration information for 2020-2021. Ms. Fettie.
Hi there. Thank you, Chair Mullen and members of the school board. I'm here to give just a brief overview of the things that are happening in January for our Welcome to White Bear Month, and many of them have happened, and we're excited to give a report on them. And so, as you know, families are obviously invited into our schools at any time to learn about our offerings, and January is a time set aside for those families who are looking for registration for the next year, which is crazy to think, but it's a really good planning place for us to be, and we're finishing up this year strong, but then already planning for next fall as well. So we'll start with the high school level. Our, both our South Campus and North Campus hosted the incoming ninth graders through 12th graders at Info Nights, and those took place last week. The same happened at our middle school level, incoming fifth grade families and those who are brand new to our district. We're also welcomed in last Thursday to learn about all of the great things happening at our middle school level. At elementary, each of our schools last week hosted tours and information sessions for our incoming families, and then events later on this year will also continue to welcome the new kindergarten families into that, to meet the teachers and to check out the schools, and we're excited to welcome the class of 2033. And you did hear that right, 2033, our incoming kindergartners this fall. So of course, like I said, any families who missed that or are looking for additional tours and information are absolutely always invited to contact our schools. The school listings are on the website, and they're invited in. I'm going to continue to cover specifically some additional information and communication that we've done with our kindergarten families, incoming kindergarten families, because they are the biggest cohort coming in. Some of the processes that we've continued to do this year, we've had online enrollment, of course, which has been good, and we've streamlined that process a bit so that our incoming families will do the kindergarten enrollment information, and then they'll do the online family update along with all of our families during the summertime again as well. So we'll have another checkpoint to ensure that the information continues to be correct. We also have, of course, done elementary experiences postcards, I'm sorry, bookmarks, really giving our incoming kindergarten families an idea of not necessarily expectations, but things that they might be working with their child on between now and next fall when their kiddo comes into the kindergarten classroom. We've, of course, done printed elementary guides, continue to do that, and then our videos that highlight our elementary level, and we, of course, have done that for each of our levels, early childhood, elementary, middle school, and high school. Some of the other exciting things that we've done is to continue to do something that we've done for the last year as well, is the elementary experiences bookmark. We've done that in English, and we've also done that in Spanish and Hmong, and provided that right off the bat to all of our families in that incoming packet. We've also had Spanish-Hmong information available on our district website for families who would like to read it in those two, in those two languages. And then our videos all have Spanish captions as well, so the enrollment video has that in addition to having Spanish captions on any of our district videos. And then we did add a home language question to our census form that is sent home when new families move into the area or when new babies are born. A census form is sent to them so we can continue to serve all of our families who need information in a way other than English in the future as well. Something, one last element that we've added that I'm especially excited for, because it really does welcome our new families really well, is after the enrollment process has happened, we're starting to send a "you're in" welcome letter and welcome packet from the principals. And of course, I forgot the t-shirt. I'll run over it at the end when you have any questions at all. But so, all of our incoming kindergarten students, after their enrollment is processed, they'll get a packet from their incoming principal with a note from them, a flyer that lists some additional opportunities to come in, whether it be for a parade or a carnival or something that's happening in the school during the spring, and then a t-shirt, of course, that says "I'm a bear." That's a continuation of the onesies that we send to brand-new babies, the Screen at Three t-shirts that we do for three-year-olds, and then really welcoming them into White Bear Nation with a t-shirt that they can wear proudly when they come in the fall or before then. So we're excited again to welcome the class of 2033. Now that I've covered the K-12, I'll quickly finish with an overview of our early childhood program. Opening for preschool comes up, will open next Tuesday on the 21st. Early childhood family education registration happens later this spring, and then, of course, our Screen at Three, the screening process, has registrations monthly throughout the year. So our early childhood families are welcomed in throughout the year as well in that way. So in closing, again, we're excited to finish this year strong and then to start building the blocks for a really strong fall as well. And I'll let you think of questions while I run and get the shirt quickly.
Thanks, Ms. Fettie.
So, here we go. So it's a little, there we go. And so, yes, size four, six will be sent to all of our little four- and five-year-olds who are, and six-year-olds who are coming into kindergarten in the fall. So thank you. Any questions?
Questions for Ms. Fettie. So all of registration should be completed for all of our students. Is there a deadline with that?
We, absolutely, for staffing purposes, you know, the earlier in the spring that all of our, that all of our incoming students are accounted for, we'll help our principals to set up their staffing levels and stuff. Of course, we take registrations throughout the spring and the summer, but if families know that they are intending to come to White Bear and join us, we would love to get them in the door and start welcoming them sooner rather than later.
All right. Thank you very much for the update.
Thank you.
We will now move to our next informational item, C2, which is the superintendent's report. Dr. Kazmercheck.
Thank you, Mr. Mullen, members of the board. Before tonight's meeting, we recognized the White Bear Lake Area High School Fall Musical Students who received outstanding honors in the Hennepin Theater Trust's Spotlight Program. Congratulations, students. The district is hosting the January Staff and Community Well-Being Series Session focused on helping our middle school girls become healthy, resilient, thriving young women at 7:00 PM this Thursday, January 16, in the District Center Community Room, which is this room right here. And please remember to dress warmly on these cold winter days. The White Bear Lake Area Educational Foundation, through The Closet, has jackets, mittens, hats, and scarves available for district families in need. Should you know of any families that could benefit from the generosity of our community, please contact the closet@closet, here, I'll spell this out, C-L-O-S-E-T-W-B-L-A-E-F@Gmail.com. Members of our foundation and other volunteers will then contact the family and make confidential arrangements to help those who do not already have warm clothes. Those families who have cold weather items to donate are invited to contact the White Bear Lake Area Educational Foundation at 651-407-7696. All right. So our district continues to be one of many experiencing a service outage of FeePay, so I wanted to make an announcement here that would be broadcast. So FeePay is our online payment provider. FeePay continues to work through the issues, but the service is still not available, so district families cannot currently make online payments for meals, field trips, school events, or athletics. So if families need to make a payment, in the meantime, schools can accept cash or checks to apply to balances, including meal balances. We will provide email updates to families as we work through the issues with the FeePay online payment system. All right. It is important to remember the emergency school closing information in case there is a need for it. Don't worry, students, I don't think there's going to be any need for emergency school closings this winter. We had too many last year, so. If winter weather is so severe that schools need to close, parents will also be alerted in three ways as soon as a decision is made. A school messenger, phone message, and email will be sent to all parents. Those who have opted in to receive text messages will be alerted in that way as well. A message will be posted on the district's homepage at www.isd624.org, and messages will be posted on the district's Facebook and Twitter pages. Always assume schools are open and in session unless you hear or see differently from an official district source. All right. With that, turn it over to, for our student liaison update.
Welcome back, everyone, from winter break. I hope everyone got some much-needed rest on their time off. Just remember, in this winter weather, students, to park first next to the curb and then next to other already parked cars to make sure that everybody gets a parking spot. Also, our Bears had some really great games recently. Our boys' basketball team beat our rival Zephyrs 68-65 last Saturday. Also, our boys' hockey team came back for a win against Stillwater in overtime with a score of 4-3 last Thursday. Our varsity gymnastics team took second in their invite this weekend at Farmington. They had three girls placed in the top five scores for all-around. And the one act play this year, Sleepless in Sienna, debuts on January 31 with an additional show taking place on February 1. So look out for more details on Showtime soon. Next week is finals week, so good luck to all students in their test preparations, and go Bears.
All right. Thank you very much. Dr. Kazmercheck, I just have a quick question. We're not the only ones seeing the problems with the FeePay stuff?
No, it's the company-wide issue. So the, any district that's contracted with them is having the same issue. Yep, so.
All right. Thank you.
It's unfortunate, but we're doing everything we can on our end. So hopefully, I, we can't really give a timeline, but hopefully soon. We hoped that it would have been fixed by now, but.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions for Dr. Kazmercheck? All right. We will then move into our first operational item, and there are several, so we will move into our first one, E1, which is action on the resolution authorizing the approval of the sale of general obligation school building bonds, Series 2020A. Mr. Wall.
Thank you, Chair Mullen, members of the board. On November 5, voters approved the Building Our Future referendum for the, supporting the construction improvement of school facilities. Since that time, we've been working with our financial advisors, municipal advisors from Ellers Incorporated to prepare for the first bond sale. With us tonight is Shelby McQuay from Ellers Incorporated, and she's been walking alongside us this entire time, and she's going to explain the resolution and the pre-sale report.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. First, congratulations on passing the referendum. I know you did a lot of work. There's a lot of time put into it. I thank you. I know most of you have met my kid, who I walked around with, but I have three kids at Badness, and they'll benefit from all the new facilities. So they're looking forward to it. I'm looking forward to it, so thank you. So I'll just walk briefly through the pre-sale report. There's a portion of the school building bonds that you're selling tonight, although you voted on two, about three, you voted on 300, we all voted on $326 million of voter-approved bonds. We're selling $250,000 million tonight. So I'll just walk briefly through the pre-sale report, and then I can answer any questions regarding the resolution as well. So as part of the overall plan, it was about a 25-year funding plan, kind of blended altogether the three school building issues. So one was planned for 2020, one was planned for 2022, and one was planned for 2024, and I'll just sort of highlight the changes that we made as a result of the better interest rate environment that we're in now relative to where you were when we're submitting the review and comment schedules to the Department of Education and preparing the pre-election estimates. So tonight, again, I said $250 million will be this first issue. The purpose is listed there, so this will be a single, a single purpose for all the building bond issues, and it'll be spread over the term of the project. So the authority, of course, is granted to you by the voters, and then Chapter 475 is the authorizing statute, which allows you to issue general obligation bonds. The term of this particular bond, the $250 million, will be a 24-year, almost a 25-year bond, and like I had mentioned, in order to take full advantage of the good interest rates now, the initial plan that we had gone in with, planned to sell $200 million now, and then the remainder in '22 and '24. Because interest rates are lower now, we're going to sell more bonds now upfront and sell them over a longer period of time to lock in those later interest rates. So you're still generating, the plan is still the same over the full term or over all the bond issuances, but because you can lock in those later maturities, lock in a larger amount, that's a net savings overall in interest and the interest savings to the taxpayers over the entire plan. So these will, the interest will be due beginning February 1 of 2021, so this levy went on in taxes payable in 2020 to make your first interest payment in February 1 of '21, and then principal on the bonds will be due in 2021 through 2045. You'll have an opportunity to refund the bonds beginning in 2028, and that should generate some savings at that time. The state credit enhancement program is a free program for all school districts that allows you essentially a little bit of bond insurance. So you'll have this bond insurance, will, you'll sort of, you'll get both your underlying rating of the school district, which is a great rating from S&amp;P, and then you'll also get the state's AAA rating on top of that. So it's an insurance to the bondholders that they'll get paid. This results in better interest rates for school districts, so great there. So as part of the bond issuance, the districts will, district will go through another bond rating process, and that will be Mr. Wall, and then Dr. Kazmercheck will participate in that, represent the school board, answer any questions that S&amp;P might have, and then they'll produce another rating for the district and for this building bond, this building bond issuance. The basis of issuance is listed there. This is the only financing tool that is available to school districts that allows you to do all of the projects that you need to get done, and it was the program that was communicated to the voters. There's an additional debt service levy that was communicated to the voters at the time, and all of this, these planned issuances fit into the tax impact that was communicated at the time. On the day of sale, Ellers will solicit competitive bids, and then bidders from all over the country will submit their lowest, their lowest proposal to you, and you'll award based on the lowest true interest cost. Part of the resolution tonight is that you will set an upper limit of 4.25%. Current interest rates are well below that, but it's just sort of an insurance to the board that you would not have to authorize or you can't authorize if the... board that you would not have to authorize, or you can't authorize if the interest rate exceeds that, so you're insured a lower rate than, than that. The premium pricing structure is the next section listed there, and so in this current market environment, the, the underwriters are paying a premium, or paying more than the face value of the bonds. That goes to offset any interest costs and can also be used to fund the program, the project construction fund. Beginning at the top of page three, there's, we always review your existing debt, we do this twice a year, with a report to you, and you have no other debt right now that is available to be refunded. Both the continuing disclosure sections and the arbitrage monitoring just outline some of the, the requirements that you need to do in order to have tax-exempt debt out there. So you're required to disclose certain financial information annually, and then following up on any issuances, the IRS wants to ensure that you are not generating too much money or, you're just making sure that you're spending it as they had anticipated. You'll also be able to invest the proceeds, and any earnings you'll be able to use towards the project fund. The other service providers are listed there. And then at the top of page four is just a timeline of what you can see going forward. So we're here tonight just doing an overview, you'll authorize the parameters resolution to award the sale. There's some things that we'll need to go through, like a due diligence call and a conference with the rating agency, and then on February thirteenth, that will be the sale of the bonds, and as part of the resolution tonight, you're authorizing the superintendent, or the assistant superintendent, and a board officer to authorize the proposal from the underwriters, so the winning proposal with the lowest interest cost. And then on February twenty-fourth, we'll be back and present the results of the sale to you. The closing date is March fifth, that's the date that you will have the funds available to you to begin investing, and then to spend out of that whatever project costs come in. I'll just walk through just some of the schedules, these are some of the formats that you saw as part of the review and comment or prior to the election. So our pre-election estimates are the first column there, we'd anticipated the deposit to the construction fund at about three twenty-two. So the issuance costs there, or the total power amount is listed for the 2020 issue of two hundred and fifty thousand, so we're going to sort of plan to spend, or plan to buy as much now as we possibly can, and then the remainder will be in the 2022 and 2024 issues. The debt plan is listed on page six, so some, just some changes that we've been able to update since the review and comment. I would just note that your tax base grew more than we had anticipated, so we had included a four percent growth in the, the tax value. You were, Ramsey County updated that to preliminary numbers of about seven percent growth in value, so that's a larger tax base to spread that, that debt levy over. So what that results in is just a, a more capacity to pay some, some principal upfront. And then the facilities maintenance bond issues are included in this plan, as well as the voter-approved. So initially, we were planning to spend two hundred million, or to issue two hundred million, right now seventy-six million in 2022, fifty million in 2024, but that was able to get pushed up to, to lock in the, the lower interest rates. So you set your levy for this in, in December, this was not included in the T N Ts, but it was on your final levy, so the taxes for this have started to, will be paid in May and October, and then in order to make that first interest payment. So on page seven is just the victorial, which shows the series of bond issuances over time and the total plan to stay within the tax impact as approved by the voters, and the goal here really was to lock into the longer maturities and the lower interest rate, the higher amount of principal being paid now, to just lower the, the interest over time. In the review and comment, we had estimated debt levies for all of the voter-approved issues at five hundred and forty-seven million. The current estimate right now is at five hundred and five million, so a savings of about forty-seven million dollars just as a result of the lower interest rates now. The debt service schedule is just listed on page eight, that's the semi-annual schedule that is paid out, and then page nine is just a, kind of a recognition of where we were when we were at pre-election and the review and comment, when you had to submit the review and comment, rates were higher, they've since dropped considerably, and we're really updating the estimates from the time of review and comment to the time of now, and hoping that holds or drops even a little more at the time of sale. So the parameters resolution just identifies that upper limit of the true interest cost and identifies the, the people who will sign for it, and then we'll be back to ratify the sale on February twenty-fourth.
All right, thank you. Mr. Wald, is there anything else that you had? Okay, would ask for a motion to approve the action, or to approve the resolution as presented in the packet.
Remove.
A motion by Mr. Arcand, is there a second? Second by Dr. Newmaster, any questions regarding the resolution or the action? Oi.
So is the rate locked in now, or is it not locked until March fifth?
So we estimated for pre-sale, I think, three point two seven is what we're currently estimated, given the updated interest rates, but the rate will actually be locked in on February thirteenth, on the day of sale.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing and seeing none, this will require a roll-call vote.
Arcand?
Aye.
Belloy?
Aye.
Chapman absent. Ellison? Aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes, thank you.
Thanks.
We will next, we will now move to our next operational item, E2. Bear with me, there's a ton of paperwork here. It is the 2020 School Board Operational Procedures as Presented in the Packet. There, these are the Rules of Order and the Board Agenda Format for 2020. There's a recommended action to approve them, would ask for a motion to do so.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Ellison, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Belloy, any questions regarding the action? The Rules of Order and the Board Format are presented in the packet. Seeing no discussion, we're just going to do a roll-call, just to be safe. Is there a voice? Oh, all those in favor of approving the action, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, the action is approved. Next on the agenda is E3, which is the School Board Members Compensation for 2020. There is a recommended action to recommend, the School Board recommends to keep the same compensation levels this year as last year. I would ask for a motion to approve the recommended action. A motion by Dr. Newmaster, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Belloy, any discussion regarding the action? This having financial implications, we would need to do a roll-call vote.
Arcand?
Aye.
Belloy?
Aye.
Chapman absent. Ellison? Aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Next is the Operational Item E4, which is the Action on the Regular and Work-Study Meeting Schedule 2020-2021. Dr. Kazmercheck.
Uh, yeah, it's pretty standard, what we're used to. I will point out that in February, you'll see, February twenty-fourth, you'll see a special meeting at five-thirty. That is for the purpose of ratifying the, the sale of the bonds that, as a full board, that Don and I would have, would have authorized back on February thirteenth. So, so that's why you see that, that one odd listing on, on February twenty-fourth, but otherwise, I think it follows a similar pattern to what we've done before, so.
All right, you see the recommended action to approve the following resolution to be resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 624, that the attached School Board Meeting Calendar be approved and adopted for the 2020-2021 school year, and that pursuant to Minnesota Statute 645445, the School Board of Independent School District 624 has determined that Indigenous People Day is not a legal holiday, and therefore, public business, including school board and informational meetings, may be transacted on that day, correct? There is that recommended action, is there a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Ellison, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Arcand, any discussion regarding the recommended action? Hearing or seeing none, this will require a roll-call vote.
Arcand?
Aye.
Belloy?
Aye.
Ellison? Aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
All right, we will now move to Operational Item E5, Action on the Official Deposits for the School District Funds and Authorized Bank Account and Signatures. Mr. Wald?
Yes. Each year, the board authorizes the bank accounts as official depositories, as well as authorized signers on each account, and the list of banks that we do business with is in the board packet, and so we're recommending that the board move to approve the authorized official depositories, as well as authorized signers for each account.
The, you've heard the recommended action, is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Belloy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Newmaster, any discussion regarding the action? Hearing or seeing none, this will require a roll-call vote.
Arcand?
Aye.
Belloy?
Aye.
Ellison? Aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
All right, we will now move to Operational Item E6, Action on the Annual Resolution Authorizing Administration to Contact for Budgetary Items, Contract for Budgetary Items. Dr. Kazmercheck?
Sure, I can take that one. So this is, this is a, an item that we act upon each January, we started this a couple of years ago, it just clearly defines the authority of administration, and that we've included the statutory change where the threshold went from a hundred thousand up to a hundred and seventy-five thousand, so I think it's fairly straightforward with, when you read the recommended action, I think you'll, you'll follow along what, what this authorizes Mr. Wald and myself to do up to a certain level, so, based on what's allowed by statute, so.
Okay, I would ask for a motion to approve the recommended action.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Ellison, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Arcand, any discussion regarding the recommended action? Hearing or seeing none, this will require a roll-call vote.
Arcand?
Aye.
Belloy?
Aye.
Ellison? Aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Next is E7, which is the Action on the Official Publication for the School District for 2020. Dr. Kazmercheck?
Just our, our long relationship with the White Bear Press will continue as our, as our legal, our newspaper of legal standing, so recommend approval.
You, there's a recommended action before you to approve the White Bear Press as our publication, is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
A motion by Dr. Newmaster, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Thompson, this, any discussion regarding the action? Hearing or seeing none, this will require a roll-call vote.
Arcand?
Aye.
Belloy?
Aye.
Ellison? Aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Okay, next is the, we'll move to E8, which is the Appointment of the, of Compliance Officers. Dr. Kazmercheck?
Yep, so we are required to certify to the Minnesota Department of Ed that we're in compliance with federal laws and regulations and state laws and rules prohibiting discrimination, and part of, part of that is to designate compliance officers as, as outlined here. So we have a District ADA, 504 Coordinator be Lisa Orin, District Human Rights Officer Matthew Mons, and Title IX Coordinator Sarah Paul.
You've heard the recommended action, is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
A motion by Dr. Newmaster, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Arcand, any discussion regarding the recommended action? Hearing or seeing none, this will require a roll-call vote.
Arcand?
Aye.
Belloy?
Aye.
Ellison? Aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Okay, we will now move to E9, which is the Local Education Agency Authorization. Dr. Kazmercheck?
Right, so each year, you authorize the superintendent to be the Local Education Agency Representative for the purpose of reviewing and approving documents required for compliance to federal programs included in the Elementary and Secondary Education Act for 2020, so.
You've heard, you've heard the recommended action, is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Ellison, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Thompson, any discussion regarding the action? Hearing or seeing none, this will require a roll-call vote.
Arcand?
Aye.
Belloy?
Aye.
Ellison? Aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Okay, we will now move to E10, which is Action on Legal Designation of Legal Counsel. Dr. Kazmercheck?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mullen. So this, again, is an annual approval item, it designates the legal counsel that we use. So Knutson, Flynn, and Deans, that is typically we use them for, they're a bond counsel, for example, think do other, they're a full-service firm as, as well. Radwick, Rozak, Maloney, we've used them from time to time, and then Rupp, Anderson, Squires, and Walzberger, perhaps the one you're most familiar with, we work with Mick Walzberger a fair amount, and then, and if there are others as needed, but we typically stick to these, these particular firms. The recommended action also lists those who are approved or authorized to contact legal counsel, so I won't read through that unless you would like me to, but it's, it's spelled out there.
You've heard the recommended action, is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Motion by Dr. Newmaster, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Belloy, any discussion regarding the recommended action? Hearing or seeing none, this will require a roll-call vote.
Arcand?
Aye.
Belloy?
Aye.
Ellison? Aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
All right, we will now move to E11, which is the Appointment of the Representative for the Equity Alliance Minnesota. I would recommend that we, we appoint Jessica Ellison to the White Bear Lake School Boards' Rep, as the White Bear Lake School Boards' Representative to the Equity Alliance Minnesota for 2020. Is there a motion to, I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second by Ms. Belloy, any discussion regarding the motion? This will require a roll-call vote.
Arcand?
Aye.
Belloy?
Aye.
Ellison? Aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
All right, next is E12, which is the Appointment of a Representative for the Intermediate School District 916, 916. I, there's a recommended action to appoint Kim Chapman as the White Bear Lake Area Schools' Representative to Intermediate School District 916 School Board for 2020, I would make that motion.
Second.
And the second by Ms. Ellison, is there any discussion regarding the motion? Hearing or seeing none, this will require a roll-call vote.
Arcand?
Aye.
Belloy?
Aye.
Ellison? Aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Okay, next is E13, which is the Approval of the 2020 Minnesota Pay Equity Filing. Mr. Wald, is that you?
Yeah, I'll step in for Mr. Mons today, he's celebrating the birth of his child this, the other day, so he's probably burping a baby or something.
Burping.
I feel like I, I won here, and, but he would tell you about the local Pay Equity Act, that every third year, the school district is required by statute to submit a pay equity report to the state, and the state were required to use the December thirty-first data and submit the report by January thirty-first. The report measures a number of items, one of them is gender, whether a position is dominated by male or female employees, whether, the report includes a minimum and maximum pay, how long it takes a person to get to a level of maximum payment, and whether they get service credit, longevity. We are providing this data for every position in the school district, and that will be included in the state report. A summary of the report is included in the board packet, and the HR department has run this data through, through some test materials that the state provides, and they believe we're going to be in full compliance again this time, but we need board to pass a resolution to submit the report, and then we'll bring the report to you when it's returned by the state. in court, included in the board packet.
The resolution, whereas the Human Resources Department has prepared the filing of record, therefore be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 624 approve the 2020 Minnesota Pay Equity filing. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Ellison, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Arcand. Any discussion? Ms. Ellison?
I have a question. Mr. Wald, I'm not sure that this is something that Mr. Mons will have to answer, but will there be anything in the report that comes out that will show progress, our progress or how we're doing with gender pay equity over time? I mean, look, and without the context of what, where we've been in the past, it's hard for me to...
Yeah, I can't answer that.
Okay.
I could ask Mr. Mons to follow up with you on that.
Yeah, that would be great. It would be really interesting to see how we have tracked with our gender pay equity in this district.
Sure, sure. I'll bring that to his attention.
Thank you.
Dr. Newmaster?
And I just had one question. As I was reading through it, when it says that Roman numeral one, general job class information, male classes, female classes, that doesn't imply, does it, that only a certain sex may apply? It's just how many are in each? What does that mean?
Yeah, that's another, Mr. Mons' question.
Okay.
All right. Other questions, comments?
We don't limit application to gender, so it's, it's perhaps a historical, you know, a statewide historical designation is probably how that's defined, but we'll get a, we'll get an answer for you. We certainly don't limit application to one gender or the other for any position, so.
Not anymore.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, this will require a roll call vote.
Arcand?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Ellison, aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
All right. And then number E14, the tentative contract for 2019-2021 fiscal year with the White Bear Lake Schools Cabinet members. Mr. Ma, who's taking this? Dr. Caspercheck?
Uh, Mr. Wald, did, did Matt talk to you about the contracts? Okay. Well, yeah, well, I guess I don't have any context to give you. I think, I'm trying to recall, I think there was conversation in closed session generally about administrative compensation, so I think we would, we would go with that, and then we could, again, we could follow up with you if need be.
Okay. So there's a resol, there's a resolution that whereas the parties have reached a recommended salary values and insurance contributions, therefore be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 624 approves the 2019-2021 salaries and insurance contributions for the cabinet members. Is there a motion to do so?
We skipped the nutrition.
Did I, did I skip something?
We got approved the nutrition.
Oh, please, actually, I apologize, let me back up because it's my bad on mine. The, so before we do that, we need to go backwards to E14, to the 2019-2021 fiscal year White Bear Lake Schools Nutrition Association.
So this one too, I, I don't know, again, if Mr. Wald has anything to add, I can tell you that it's within the parameters that we've discussed in closed session, so I, again, I think it's fairly straightforward.
Thank you. So then the resolution was, would be, whereas the White Bear Lake area, White Bear Lake Schools Nutrition Association members have ratified their contract, then it, then be hereby resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 624 approves the 2019-2021 agreement and authorizes the chair and clerk to execute the agreement on behalf of the school board. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Beloit, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Thompson. Any discussion regarding the agreement? Seeing none, this will require a roll call vote.
Arcand?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Ellison, aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Now we can go to 15, and I apologize again. Tentative contract for 2019-2021 fiscal year with the White Bear Lake Schools Cabinet members. I will reread the resolution, whereas the parties have reached a recommended salary values and insurance contribution, then be it hereby resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 624 approves the 2019-2021 salaries and insurance contributions for cabinet members. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Ellison, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Beloit. Any discussion regarding the motion? I'm going to wait a couple seconds. Hearing are seeing no discussion, this will require a roll call vote.
Arcand?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Chapman?
Abstained.
Abstained, okay. Ellison, aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Okay. E16, we're getting there. Hang in there, guys. Tentative agreement 2019-2021 for the Confidential Employees Group. Dr. Caspercheck?
Thank you, Mr. Mullen and members of the board. Once again, this would, this would have fallen within the parameters that have been shared with you during closed session, and I can certainly follow up with you again if, if you wish, but that, but this is within line with what was discussed.
Okay. I will read the resolution, whereas the parties have reached a tentative agreement on the July 1, 2019, June 30, 2021 contract, whereas the Confidential Employees Group have ratified the contract, then it be hereby resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 624 approves the 2019-2021 agreement and authorizes the chair and the clerk to execute the agreement on behalf of the school board. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Arcand, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Beloit. Any discussion regarding the resolution? Hearing are seeing none, this will require a roll call vote.
Arcand?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison, aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Okay. And last but not least, there are three policies that are coming before the board for their second reading. We will do them in one fell swoop. Policy 532, use of peace officers and crisis teams to remove students from school grounds. Policy 611, homeschooling, and policy 616, school district systems accountability. Is there a motion to approve these policies?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Beloit, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ellison. Any discussion regarding the policies? Ms. Thompson?
Just, as someone knew, I had a question in regards to the reference of students with IEPs.
Can you tell us what page, please?
Page 532-2.
Okay.
And 532-3. I guess I was reading through it and I'm just wondering if this policy is something that is only specified towards students with IEPs?
Dr. Caspercheck?
Or does it relate to all students?
It relates to all students, including a student who's on an IEP.
Okay. I was just, because I noticed that it seemed most of the language was tailored towards students with IEPs.
I know Ms. Orin's not here.
Yeah, Ms. Orin's not here. It, it calls out a student with an IEP as well because there, there are times when things are perhaps done differently, but it's, so the, if we just go back, if we go back to the purpose, the purpose of the policy is to describe the appropriate use of peace officers and crisis teams to remove if necessary a student, including a student with an IEP from school grounds. So it's, it's any student, and, and then it also lists specific language for students who are an individual, individualized education plan. So it might be, it might be helpful to know that, so this is a revision, and so the, the large gray areas where you see on your printed out copy, that is, that would be in, and then, and the strike through is, was probably, and Mr. Chapman and Ms. Ellison, you were at the committee meeting, MSBA makes recommendations for changes, and so we typically follow MSBA recommendations, and so this is a, a model policy that has probably evolved somewhat over time, but it's generally in line with the Minnesota School Boards Association recommendation, and their lawyers come up with the language, and we typically adopt that, so.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions regarding the policies? Hearing are seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the policies, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Eyes have it, the policies are adopted. Okay, we are now at the portion of our meeting for board forum, which gives the ability for school board members to talk about or tell us about any upcoming events, anything they would like. Is there anything for board forum? Dr. Newmaster?
Well, I would like to extend an invitation to the annual Korean Lunar New Year, which is being celebrated at North Campus on Saturday, the 25th, which actually is real Lunar New Year this time. It's a movable holiday, and it's hosted by the nonprofit Korean Cultural Association, and entertainment is provided by Chungmi Korean Dance and Drum. There's a lot of things going on, there will be poster, I think in your digital backpack, but what you should know is, it's the same day as the Community Ed Bundle Up Bears event at North Campus, where they're going to be freezing outside and skating, so there's a nice, warm, free, exciting Korean drum program at 1 o'clock. So once your toes are frozen, come in, thaw out, and watch the show. It's free, and it's fun, and I think this is at least the 22nd year we've done it at North Campus. So we thank White Bear for being a good host to Lunar New Year.
All right. Anything else under board forum? Ms. Beloit?
I just wanted to say that the, the White Bear Lake Area Education Foundation is looking for donations specifically adult jackets and winter coats, so if anybody has any of those things to donate, you can contact the foundation. Also, the, the Education Foundation is also looking for volunteers to work at the closet. There's a couple different time periods, but they're each about two hours long, and they're looking for people that can do it once a month, during, some week during that month, so if there's an interest out there, contact the Education Foundation.[1685.41]